I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson. Christensen.
Here.
Amon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand and we say the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I have one. We'd like to add to the agenda under eight and a half, if you will, or 8A. Wilmer City Council open forum right after that. Parking study report. Bruce will introduce Mr. Bernard and we can change that to that. Are there any consent items that we need to approve?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written. Any discussion? And we have a motion on that. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion is carried. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
They were all approved, Mr. Mayor.
They're all approved, okay. With that, we'll move into the scheduled hearing. Kevin, if you want to tell us about the ordinance establishing an on-sale brewer taproom liquor license category.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you a draft of an ordinance. Tonight is the hearing. This new ordinance is a result of a law change in 2011 where the legislature created a new category which accommodates the unique retailing venue of breweries and brew pubs in the city. We're allowed to create this special on-sale category for licensees to brew their own product onsite. You've probably seen some of those in metropolitan restaurants where they have a big vat behind a glass window or something and they have brewmasters onsite and the only 3.2 percent malt liquor that they sell are those brands that they have brewed themselves. This ordinance establishes that opportunity for someone to do that and it also expands the off-sale 3.2 percent malt liquor ordinance for the sale of what is known as Growlers or any other packaging type of packaging up their own brew that has been manufactured onsite. And so pursuant to taking testimony tonight, it is statute recommendation that we adopt this ordinance. Subsequent to that, we do need a resolution to establish a fee and there will be a recommendation for that.
At this point, I will open the public hearing to the public. If there are any questions or concerns, speak now.
If you would please, I'm sorry, if you would please come to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Ryan Fuchs, 4922 15th Street North, Wilmer. I am the guy that emailed Kevin and the only issue I have with that is the beers won't necessarily all be 3.2 percent. They would vary depending on style. They may be even lower than two or 3.2 percent and they could go all the way up to, some of the high ends could be pushing 10 percent, up to almost wine-type percentage. So it's not just, it's not just the American light lagers that are generally around the 3.2 percent. It, it just varies per, you know, per each style of beer.
Thank you. I would like to bring that to our chief if you can.
I think actually the city.
Mr. Mayor, I can speak to this.
Okay, would you please?
Yes, I did. I drafted this ordinance, the one you had before. You would not limit the taproom license or the Growler license to 3.2 malt liquor. It would apply to any malt liquor authorized by statute. So that ordinance is consistent with statute that doesn't limit it to 3.2.
Perfect. That would be great. Thank you very much.
Are there any other people that would like to speak on that? Hearing, then I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the council. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Did we get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance establishing an on-sale brewer taproom liquor license category and amending an off-sale liquor malt liquors license for the licensed brewer. And we have a motion to approve, adopt, number, give it a number and publish. And we need a roll call on this. Councilman Amon?
Just a question. I was curious as far as the hours on page two underneath section 3.58, off-sale malt liquor license, item C. Off-sale malt liquor may only be made during the hours that off-sale of liquor may be made. And I'm assuming those are the hours. Does that need to be clarified as to the hours or days or not? Or is that redundant? Should that be specified in the license?
I believe it's been customary in our past practice to just make reference to words about the time change and then we follow state law.
Okay.
That came to our advantage a while back when Sunday sales began at noon and a handful of years back it was reduced to 10:00 a.m. That takes no action on our part if we just stay with the words rather than we detail times ourselves.
Okay. So we don't need to have it clarified by any means then?
No, it'll be what state statute allows.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Roll call. Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Kevin, would we, a resolution setting the annual fee should follow the action on the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, this most likely will go as a joint license, the taproom license and then the off-sale license. And so our off-sale is already established at $150. We feel that we should follow the taproom with $150. That pair up would be $300 which would cover our cost of licensing, which was our main goal there. So it is statute recommendation that we adopt a resolution setting the taproom on-sale license fee at $150 per year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to establish, would you like to repeat that, the what we're talking about?
We are establishing the taproom on-sale annual license at $150 per year.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Kevin, would you like to explain to us the Critical Care Services Incorporated?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight we are having a hearing to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of some public finance authority bonds on behalf of Critical Care Services Incorporated. The nonprofit organization is requesting money and as part of the Internal Revenue Code, the governing authorities that are going to house those helicopters that they are purchasing with the $18,600,000 bond sale need to make approval. Given that these bonds are not for the city and they're not, and the city is not a party to any agreement involved in this financing, there is no financial liability or exposure to the city. We simply have to hold this hearing and approve the bond sales for our jurisdiction. There are tax-exempt bonds and they're being issued and it's the requirement of the Internal Revenue Code for the city council to approve them as one part of the six cities that will be doing that. As you know, the helicopter is already stationed at the Wilmer Municipal Airport and so it is statute recommendation that we adopt a resolution that has been presented with you on the back approving this issuance pursuant to that IRS code. And it is a hearing, Mr. Mayor.
At this point, I will open the hearing to the public. If there are any questions or comments. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open the discussion between the council. If there are any questions or comments from the council? Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there was a short comment period at last Rice Hospital Board of Trustees, but this really is a big deal for our city. I mean, it's a life-saving issue, will be a life-saving issue for a lot of people. So having that chopper so close is really beneficial, not only for the city of Wilmer, but our area.
Thank you, Councilman DeBleek. Introduce a resolution approving the insurance with bonding. The issuance. Financing authority on behalf of the Critical Care Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adapt the resolution approving issuance of the public finance authority of bonds on behalf of Critical Care Services Incorporated. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who actually goes through and makes sure that the paperwork is done properly in issuing these bonds? Is it?
It'll be the Bond Council of the Critical Care Services Incorporated.
Okay. Does that get approved or looked at by our finance department then too? I mean, so we know that everything's in order or our attorney?
I don't believe so.
And why?
We can review that, but I don't, our finance director could take a look at it, but I don't believe we send it off to our attorney because the Bond Council.
Okay. Well, I would suggest that we do that just so we know everything's in order.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, does each community have to approve this resolution or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, of those that are housing helicopters.
So then are we guaranteed that the helicopter will stay here then for three, four, five years or?
I don't believe there's any length of time of guaranteeing. At the sale of the bonds, it'll be here, that's probably all. But I can ask that question if there's a set, and I'm not even certain because it's a private party housing of the helicopter now, whether there's any length of term there that they've taken. But we could investigate that and report back.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. We'll go into the Wilmer City Council open forum. Is there anyone scheduled to speak? Can we take a look at that clipboard and see?
There is one person on here. Kupick.
Kupick.
Sorry.
Mr. Kupick, would you like to come up to?
It is open forum.
It is open forum.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for some, a few minutes of your time. My name is Jack Kupick. I live in Belgrade. I've been there 10 years. I've been coming to Wilmer every day for 10 years. Don't ask me why. I'm speaking to you this eve, I'm speaking to you this evening because I have been coming here for some years and I'm bothered by noticing that it seems like every month I see more Somalis. There are more Somalis in Wilmer all the time and I've been coming here for several years and I still don't know how to say hi. I don't know how to greet a Somali and it bothers me that this time is going by and I don't know how to even say hello, how are you, greetings of any kind. This bothers me. So I'm going to ask you if you have some input or if you have some control perhaps providing, coming up with some provision that would allow me to take a class maybe once a week for half an hour where I could get instruction into the very basic greetings like hi, how are you, nice day. Because it does bother me that I will go another year or two with more Somalis all the time and I still don't know how to meet these people. Now, it's true, I don't talk to Mexican-Americans. I don't talk to blacks. I don't talk to strangers generally. But these people from, I think it is North Africa, are quite different from what I've been accustomed to in this country. They're new and they're quite different and they seem to retain their identity. They drive, they walk around in long robes and they're very serious in their religion. It bothers me that I can't at least approach them. So I'm just here to say to you this evening, would you give some thought to providing to the public a place where people like myself can begin to learn how to greet the Somali? Thank you.
Does anyone here able to help him out as far as knowing how to greet a Somali person? I don't know how.
Mr. Mayor, I believe there are several translator offices in Wilmer. I believe there's one on Main Street. I forget the, on Litchfield Avenue between Fourth and Fifth, or Third and Fourth, Fourth and Fifth Street, I believe there's one. If I'm not mistaken, correct me if somebody knows otherwise, but there are, there are a couple offices that do translating and you might try.
Okay. I did contact a Somali man about a year ago. He seemed to be involved in translating and I suggested that he put together a class and he wanted to have at least 65 people in the class and he started talking about $100. And I suggested that you wouldn't get 65 people together. You might get a dozen or half a dozen who are interested. But he didn't want to work with so few people. He wanted to work with 100 or more or 65 or more. But that's as far as I have gone into finding some resolution to my bother because it bothers me. Why should I still be two years from now unable to greet a Somali? They're a part of the community. They're not going to go away and they're immoral all the time. And I just think it's really important to be able to greet them. All right?
That's an interesting position. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Mayor Yanis, may I comment?
Councilperson?
Yes. I just was going to comment at the table that I was at for, on Project 2040 for inclusion, it came up about learning how to greet, when you shake hands. There's a lot of them that speak English that don't need translation, but I think it's still something for us to learn with their expectations, our expectations. And so I think that's something that could be carried forward back to the Project 2040 to talk about how do we do that and how do we meet and greet the people who live in our community, so.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Councilman?
Just one other thought. I always had a good, have a good time stopping and talking to the people at the African Development Center. I'm sure they'd be glad to explain something to you there or give you some more information on what could be, what could be done or how you can go about it, but it's a good thought. Well, the African Development Center is right downtown, across from the old, the old Brumber Bank on Litchfield Avenue. It's got the Green Canopy, African Development Center. There's usually always somebody there.
Thank you very much. We'll move right into the, unless we have more comments or discussion. We'll move into the Finance Committee Report for July 29, 2013.
Parking study.
What did I say? Parking study, I'm sorry. I missed it right here. Parking study report. Bruce, do you want to introduce the, Mr. Bernard?
Members of the council, for the last several months, a group of local individuals has been working with representatives of the Design Center through Adam Arvidson and with SRF Consulting out of the Twin Cities. Lance Bernard has been their lead staff person on this project and they've been out and they've conducted a parking inventory, have analyzed parking conditions downtown and have followed that up with the preparation of some recommendations. The local group has operated on occasion as a TAC, a Technical Advisory Committee, and we've been brought certain sections of the report as they've been drafted and developed for review. And what Lance is here to present tonight is the final draft and it's important to remember that it is a draft. There will be some structural changes, some final changes resulting from a TAC meeting that we had this afternoon. And, you know, they'll have this report ready then sometime in the near future. This is the study that was funded by Rice Hospital and the Economic Development Commission and this is being presented to the council tonight as a courtesy, but also knowing that the Wilmer City Council is a governmental body that has the jurisdiction over public parking downtown and in its affiliation with Rice Hospital is a big player in downtown parking and what we would expect for future results. With that, I'll turn it over to Lance and he can present the final draft.
Good evening. Thank you, councilmembers and chairman. Wanted to first thank you for the opportunity to present this tonight to give you an update on where we have been with the planning process and where we've gone. As Bruce mentioned, this study has been really guided by a Technical Advisory Committee. We've met five times. We also presented, or I presented to you folks in late April to give you an update on the existing conditions analysis portion of the plan. Since that time, we've met a couple other meetings with the group to help flush out the recommendations, to understand the next steps of the process. And so as Bruce mentioned, we met this afternoon to kind of refine the draft report. So there are certainly going to be some refinement and adjustments to that report in the next couple weeks and we hope to have the final plan wrapped up by the end of the month and we'll be distributing that to the TAC and to you folks as well to take a look at. In my meeting presentation in late April to the council, really recapped what we saw in the early stages of the planning process from the existing conditions analysis. Throughout that process, we did a digital inventory of the existing spaces in downtown from on-street, off-street parking spaces. We also had folks in the field doing utilization counts to understand what parking's being utilized during what peak periods of the time to see if there's any problem areas. And throughout that existing conditions analysis that we presented, overall, we were finding that parking was being met generally throughout the downtown, that there were enough parking spaces to meet the existing land uses and businesses and residential uses in downtown. But there are certainly a couple areas that we had potential concerns with that we wanted to look closer into, that being kind of in the core part of downtown and certainly around the hospital. So that was some direction that helped us move forward into the recommendations and looking further into the next steps of the planning process. I think before we, before I summarize kind of the recommendations, I think what's really important to note about this study is we really wanted this to be a very data-driven process. And so we developed a parking model that really gives you the ability to look at the type of densities within your downtown, the amount of square footage that's being utilized, the number of occupied residential units and being able to apply that to parking generation rates to see where the need is and how that meets with your current supply. So this is a tool that we've created that we want to pass on to staff to use in the future to be able to use this model to do future analysis, to understand what future impacts might be on parking after the plan's development. So as we used that model, we needed to go forward and understand how downtown Wilmer might redevelop. So we wanted to get an understanding of future redevelopment assumptions to be able to help inform us if there would be potential impacts to the downtown parking supply over the next five to 10 years. So this, these assumptions were guided by the TAC. We also worked closely with city staff, the Wilmer Design Center, and also used the downtown plan as a foundation to understand what some of those assumptions might be to, to help us move forward with the future conditions or future scenario. Some of the key assumptions that we incorporated into this model are listed on the screen there. We assume that basically all the residential units that exist in downtown today would be occupied. There would be certainly more use in the existing space that's in downtown now. So you'd see some new commercial fill some of the vacancy spaces in, in the area. We also assume that all of the public and institutional uses in downtown would remain as is today. So city, county offices, churches would still be a part of the function of downtown. So all of those type of redevelopment assumptions, we were able to feed into our parking model to give us a better understanding whether or not there would be a parking issue if development was fully realized. So I know, I realize this is a lot of data. It's just a snapshot of kind of what the outputs are from the parking model that give us, gives us this data, that gives us this picture, whether or not there would be certain problem areas or areas of concern if, if development was fully realized over time. And so as we incorporated those redevelopment assumptions, we saw that there still would be enough generally parking overall within downtown, but certainly there was reaffirmed that there would still be some concerns with some certain areas, particularly in the core part of downtown, which is these four blocks here. And so that model has helped us move forward in developing some recommendations, being able to present a few of the findings as well of how we'd address some of those needs and issues. And with this graph here, this is really a visual that really summarizes all of the findings and recommendations as our, as part of the plan. We wanted to make this plan very graphical, easy to read, easy to understand. So I'll walk through the recommendations that are highlighted on this figure here. One of the first recommendations that we have incorporated into the plan is really kind of more high-level, encouraging the city to consider certain type of education material and marketing material to show where public parking is located in downtown. That really kind of helps facilitate and educate folks where the appropriate spots are to park. It's also can be leveraged as a number of marketing opportunities to promote different businesses within downtown or different events that occur throughout the year in the city. So this is a fairly common approach that a number of downtowns and cities will use as kind of an economic development opportunity, but more importantly, just an educational marketing material to help inform citizens and employers of where the appropriate parking is to meet their needs in downtown. The second recommendation that we needed to look at, and this came out of our discussions with TAC, is we really needed to understand what some of the residential needs might be in downtown, certainly realizing that there's opportunities to increase more residences within downtown, but how would you be able to provide them the necessary parking to meet their needs? And one of the recommendations here is to consider establishing a residential parking permit with, for residents within downtown. This would give residents the opportunities to park in various areas of downtown, whether it's a city lot or on the street without restrictions if they obtain this permit through the city. This is a pretty common practice in most, most communities. It's something that we would recommend the city to explore further when, when residents are requesting more need for, for parking in downtown. And it certainly provides, you know, if this recommendation was implemented, it's certainly something that you can then showcase to potential developers that are interested in, in adding residential units in downtown that you can assure them that they have some opportunities for their new tenants for, for parking within downtown. The third recommendation that we looked at, we were charged with looking at on-street parking restrictions and we wanted to understand a little bit about how on-street parking was being utilized and are there opportunities to increase parking restrictions in downtown. For the most part, downtown's parking, on-street parking restrictions are two hours, but we felt to meet existing needs and future needs. felt to meet existing needs and future needs that there could be some additional flexibility with those parking restrictions of increasing them to four hours. We looked at where the appropriate locations would be for those areas, and we started, we've identified some areas in these blocks here on these figures along Seventh Street and Becker Avenue. This is Litchfield here and Second Street Southwest. One of the things that we noted today in the TAC meeting, that this portion right here along Becker is currently 10 hours, so this is certainly 10-hour parking restriction would maintain there, and that's one of the refinements that we need to make to the study here in the next couple of weeks. So ultimately, looking to recommend increasing parking restrictions on some of the local streets to provide additional flexibility for residents, employees, and downtown patrons. One of the key elements to this study that we really wanted to take a real close look at is certainly the Rice Memorial Hospital and understanding what their parking needs are, how parking is being utilized today. And some of our current findings, or some of our findings in the study showed that there is a number of employees parking in Block 20 near the church. And we want to, our recommendation is to help reorient those employees to the lots that are being underutilized in Block 18 and 24 and 25, which would free up some additional space to meet the core area of downtown's parking needs. That was one of the key recommendations that came out of looking at the Rice Memorial Hospital. We certainly felt today that parking is being adequately met for Rice Memorial employees and their patients as well. There were certainly a lot of underutilized spaces in Block 18 and 24 and 25 when we did our field assessments. We also looked at Rice Memorial from a development standpoint as well. They have expressed some interest of looking to build another facility. One of those sites that they've expressed interest in to us during this process was south of their site. And so, we developed just a very illustrative concept of what that could potentially look like and how they would meet some of those parking needs without taking away parking with the new building. Their intentions that they have expressed to us is expanding their facility to anywhere about 9,500 square feet of new medical space or office space that would occur on that block. This model here, parking illustrative diagram shows the potential to expand even another facility in the corner of that block, but again, being able to meet their parking needs on-site. That would certainly require some reorientation of the existing parking lot, and I believe there are a couple small buildings on that site now that would potentially be removed if they were to pursue this type of development option in the future. But again, this was ultimately showing us that they could potentially meet their parking needs within Blocks 24 and 25 where parking is currently provided for Rice Memorial if they were to expand a facility of this nature. So we moved on to also looking at the downtown core. As I mentioned before, some of our key findings is that there was some concerns with parking in Blocks 9, 10, 14, and 15, and how that parking would be met for employees and downtown patrons. And so, one of the first discussions we started to have when we looked at this was really, are there other opportunities where people can utilize parking outside of those blocks? And this graph starts to show a walking radius from a number of the public parking lots of 600 feet, and that's really kind of an industry standard that folks use, that 600 feet from a parking lot is an appropriate distance for somebody to walk from one spot to their destination. So we wanted to try to show this graphically to show that there certainly are a number of parking opportunities that would serve the core of downtown and not having to explore any type of off-street parking lot within these blocks, because certainly it's fully developed and there'd be very little opportunity for that type of parking need on those blocks. So as we moved forward with that, we looked at where there were underutilized lots that then could serve these blocks within that 600-foot radius. And we saw a number of opportunities in the northeast and northwest corner where there is underutilized parking spaces that could be utilized by downtown employees or patrons that are staying longer than a couple hours that choose not to park on the street, that these would be a good opportunity to direct people to those sites. Also, as I mentioned before, we wanted to try to reorient employee parking from Rice Memorial in Block 20 to the east side near the kind of north of the fire station, so that would also alleviate some, or provide some additional opportunities for parking for those blocks in that area. As I showed earlier with the Rice Memorial, we kind of did this illustrative diagram of how parking could potentially be accommodated on-site if redevelopment was to occur or new development was to occur on those sites. And we did a number of these illustrative concepts, and we've been calling them parking modules, to show how parking could be handled on-site if redevelopment was to occur. And we did these for kind of half-block and full-block scenarios, because there's certainly some underutilized blocks, more so in the northeast part of our study area, when you take a look at the old, I believe it's the dealership, that there's, you know, a lot of opportunity there for new redevelopment. So what would that potentially look like, and how could parking potentially be handled on-site and be supplemented with some of the other off-street parking sites adjacent to that? So this parking study really provides a number of those examples. We hope that provides some guidance and some directions for staff as they start to have discussions in the future with developers or any other type of interests within Wilmer. We did do a special concept here for the county facilities. They've asked us to take a little closer look at their parking facilities. They certainly have kind of an odd lot with the old bank there, so we worked with them to figure out how we could add some additional parking spaces to that site. And so, this concept shows that you could add some additional spaces that would help accommodate downtown employees as well, as well as their needs within that parking lot. So this was another opportunity to demonstrate where we could potentially add some new parking spaces to help with some of those core areas of downtown that we had concerns with. In general, we also had some travel demand management strategies. These are typically just some strategies or policies for the city to consider that just help integrate new policies or language and planning documents to just encourage more walking or biking or carpooling or telecommuting, which would help take the demand off of so many single occupancy vehicles entering an area in parking. So there's a number of strategies and discussions within the draft plan that explain these measures and how they might be integrated into the future. One of our other final recommendations to this study is we really are encouraging city staff to do annual utilization counts. The utilization counts are really essential to helping understand where parking issues might be. So if that's done on a regular basis, you can, you know, track and monitor whether or not there are certain problem areas and respond to them in an effective manner. And that's really a low-cost kind of quick measure that can be done in a very timely manner. And we also want to encourage staff to use the parking model tool. As we did our best to understand what future redevelopment assumptions are and integrating that into the parking model, certainly things do change. There's certain things that you just can't predict from a development standpoint, so this model is really user-friendly for staff to be able to enter in any type of new development assumptions and see automatic results of whether or not there would be impacts to the downtown's parking supply and where those impacts might be by a block-by-block scenario. So ultimately, as we've gone through this whole planning process, we certainly see that parking is being met generally as a whole today. It certainly will be met based on the development assumptions we've made in there, but also needing to support that with some of the recommendations of trying to reorient folks to different parking lots with better signage and a number of the other measures that I talked about here tonight. So that is what we've got in our draft of plan that we're going to refine a little bit here based on tax comments this afternoon, but feel comfortable that they're comfortable with the way this plan has proceeded and with the recommendations. And certainly will be providing this final report to council and staff in the next month. I'd like to open it up for any questions, though it's a lot to digest.
Are there questions? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Lance, for the report. This is your draft report.
Correct.
It'll become the final on September 1st, as I read it earlier there.
Yes.
You mentioned earlier that your report is assuming that all offices, government, private, will remain downtown and probably add a few more as time goes by. Did you ever discuss the possibility of the courthouse being moved and how that would affect all the attorney's offices maybe moving out with them? I mean, does that come into play anywhere?
It was mentioned, but it was not realized in, as part of this park, part of the study, as part of looking at the future conditions. But ultimately, it accounts for that square footage that what's there today would maintain there, whether it is county or city-type uses. So to answer your question, we did not assume that it was leaving downtown to a different location it would maintain in the downtown.
Because it would paint a completely different picture once it left. I mean, it may become another government office, but the attorneys, a lot of them are downtown because the courthouse is right here and they can walk to it.
I would say if it was to relocate outside of our study area, there certainly then would, there still isn't a, there wouldn't be a parking problem, because you would be, you know, removing a number of employees outside of the downtown. So based on our existing and future condition scenarios, we don't see any need for additional parking, so this wouldn't have really any impact on those type of recommendations.
Okay. That's the gist that I got out of this was that there's not a parking problem, there's just, it's underutilized parking in Block 18, 24, and 25. You mentioned a downtown residential permit. It sounds interesting. I haven't heard of it before. Does that mean that they would purchase a permit because they live downtown and they could park anywhere?
Yeah. A typical residential permit program would be typically administered by the city. So if you live within, say, the study area of downtown, you would come to the city and say, "I would like to purchase a residential parking permit." They typically issue up to two parking permits per resident, per household, and then they place that permit in their window, and that would allow them to park on-street or in a parking lot, a city lot, without being towed. There certainly are some guidelines that you'd put behind that. You certainly wouldn't want them parking, in this case, probably in the downtown core area where we've seen there's a lot of utilization of on-street parking in front of the storefronts, so you'd put some type of restrictions on where they could park. As part of this study, we could not get into that level of detail of how that type of program would be rolled out, but it is something that we would recommend the city to pursue and look more into as more residents move into downtown.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your report. I listened to, I'm not sure that you were part of the open-mic show when we talked about this, probably back in April or May sometime, but I seem to recall that the figure of existing parking spaces in downtown Wilmer on-street and off-street are about 2,700. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe existing is around that number.
One would think that that would, for the time being anyway, that would be a sufficient number of parking places in our downtown area. I mean, I think that there are some changes that could, as you have suggested, that for the people that live downtown, permits and things like that. And then I think the annual use count is an important thing that we do also, because the people that I've talked with think that 2,700 parking places for downtown Wilmer would appear to be sufficient at the current time, anyway. Do you know what the breakdown is of the number of employees that park in downtown Wilmer versus the shoppers?
No, we couldn't get to that level of detail with this report, and that's where we really utilized those utilization counts to just get to a number of how parking's being utilized, but we couldn't get to the level of detail of the number of employees that are utilizing those versus, say, a resident or somebody that's doing their shopping.
Yeah. I came back to Wilmer in 1975, and Wilmer downtown was a pretty busy place, '75, '85, '95, pretty busy place. My recollection is that most employers found parking places for their employees, you know, and to keep them from parking on the streets, the concept was the on-street parking is for the shoppers, the people that come to use your store. So I think that's another issue that we need to look at, you know, is that the folks that work downtown probably need to have an area that they would park at. That seemed to work quite well back then.
Sure.
Other questions?
Mr. Philson?
Yeah, thank you for being here, Lance. When you're doing this study, the comprehensive study, will include the traffic counts from what years, 2008 to 2012? I think Men Dot's last count is in 2012 is their last. Usually they do it every two years.
Yeah, but as part of this study, we didn't need to utilize traffic counts as part of this.
As far as where they're going, the amount of traffic, intersections, nothing?
No, we didn't use that. It was just solely based on utilization of current on-street, off-street parking spaces and comparing that to land use, square footage, and number of residential units.
Okay. That'd just be interesting to see where the majority of the traffic downtown is coming in, from what direction and from what entrance.
Yeah, and I've been part of studies like that, and they're more commonly known as origin destination studies, where you actually pull over people, traffic controlled by law enforcement, and 20 seconds, where are you going, where are you coming from? And that helps inform you of kind of where people are coming and gives you an idea of the commute patterns and certain things like that. So there are opportunities out there to do that type of analysis.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I take a moment just to summarize?
Please do.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say a couple of notes. One, again, a thank you to you for allowing us to present to you a couple of times and take some of the time to show off this study to you. It's been an interesting process that really was driven by the stakeholder group, the Technical Advisory Committee, and also by the data. And I want to just put kind of the cherry on top of one thing that Lance says, and it actually addresses your comment specifically, Councilmember Dacken, which is that what we found is that, yes, overall, if you look at all of the parking in the entire downtown area and all of the even potential square footage and redevelopment, it's likely that we have enough spaces to serve all of that need. They're not all in the right places, however. It's mainly the downtown core centered on Litchfield and Fourth where there just seems to be a shortage. And this may be for a couple of reasons, and all of the recommendations are designed to get at a solution by doing a couple of things. Number one, to try to move people who are going to park for longer periods of time out of that core area to allow there to be more turnover for customers to park in front of those storefronts. So by loosening restrictions on the fringes from two hours to four hours or whatever, hopefully the employees would then park more on the fringes because they have to use their cars, they have to move their cars less often, which frees up more space in the core. Also, by doing a public information campaign to talk about the city lots that actually do kind of flank the downtown on three sides, hopefully that will again move some of the longer-term parkers and especially employees into those lots, again freeing up space in the downtown core. Residential is a big issue, because how can you sell a downtown unit if you can't give somebody a place to park? So that's where the on-street permit thing comes into play. However, again, they wouldn't be necessarily allowed to park all the time, round the clock, for 72 hours in the downtown core. That would happen a bit more on the fringes. So again, we're trying to free up that central area so that people can park in front of the businesses if they're customers, but the employees go a little farther away. And Rice Hospital figures into that, too, because that big Bethel lot is right now accommodating a lot of Rice's employees, and that becomes more of an internal problem to really get those employees to move around to the other side of Rice, because that Lot 20, that Block 20 or the Bethel lot, is really critical to allow people to move into downtown from that proximity. So what we're trying to do is So, what we're trying to do is recognize that you'll see in these recommendations there aren't major construction projects proposed, there's some restriping of some lots, maybe some reorganization, some consideration of parking as development happens, redevelopment happens. But in general, what we want to do is sort of shift how people use the parking within downtown in order to make it a better experience for all those that use parking, whether they live downtown, whether they work downtown, whether they come to shop downtown. Because right now, the complaint seems to be that there's a parking problem downtown, but I don't think it's a quantity problem, I think it's a proximity and a turnover and use problem. So, that's sort of the big takeaway in a way from this study. And again, I thank you for your time and want to publicly thank the Parking Technical Advisory Committee for their work on this, and we'll submit it to you for your further review, as Lance mentioned, on September 1st. So, if you have any questions for me specifically, I'd be happy to entertain them, otherwise we'll let you move on with the rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Board, am I allowed to make a comment or a question, ask a question?
I think so, yes.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for you.
Yes.
Actually, two. Would you say that there really isn't a parking issue downtown right now?
I wouldn't necessarily say that. I think there's not necessarily a parking quantity issue. The total number of spaces is adequate for the current state of downtown and likely the future redevelopment. However, the issue comes in utilization. I think that there isn't enough parking in exactly the right places where you want them. And one of the charts that Lance put up that shows the sort of, it was this big, long spreadsheet, and on the right, there were numbers in red, I don't know if I can get to that, but anyways, in the downtown core, the four blocks that constitute the downtown core, there actually is a parking deficit there, if you look at the square footage related to the parking that's available. So, in that area, there is a parking deficit, in fact, whereas overall, that can be mitigated. So, the idea, again, is some of that parking deficit is being driven by the fact that employees and potentially residents are parking on the street in those areas, and we're trying to move those a little bit more to the edge, so there can be more customer turnover in that core, which will begin to allay the issue that people perceive that there's not enough parking. There's not necessarily enough parking right where people want it.
And the second question that I have is, will this council have the final decision on what happens?
Yes, the status that we are is that this report was funded by other organizations in town and supported by the city, and so it'll be a resource for the city council and for city staff going forward. Any of the recommendations that might come out of this, if the city staff or city council decide to act upon them, then certainly that would go into the general process for anything that happens within the city, whether there are staff initiatives that come before the council. The report itself doesn't necessarily need to be adopted by you, it's more of a resource document.
Thank you. So, I have, is there any further questions or comments? That was for information only. With that, we will, thank you, by the way, and we will move into the Finance Committee report for July 29th, 2013. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on July 29th, 2013 at 4:45 in Conference Room 1 at the City Office Building. The first item of business was public comment. Chair Anderson acknowledged that there was no one present that wished to address the committee at that time. Item number two, preliminary budget for Sperryville Lift Station project. Staff explained to the committee that replacement of the Sperryville Lift Station is part of the 2013 capital improvements plan. Council has previously awarded a professional services contract, and the construction project is currently out for bids. A preliminary budget totaling $329,100 needs to be adopted, which includes $275,000 from capital improvements and $54,100 from the operating portion of the 2013 budget. Following discussion, it was, a motion was made, seconded and passed, for the following recommendation to introduce a resolution adopting the Sperryville Lift Station project preliminary budget of $329,100, and at this time, I would introduce that resolution.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution adopting the Sperryville Lift Station project with a preliminary budget of $329,100. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Item number three on the agenda was received of financial reports for various city operations. The city, or the committee received the May 31, 2013 Rice Hospital financial report. Several questions were raised, and it was requested that representatives of Rice Hospital attend the Finance Committee meetings every other month instead of quarterly to present their reports and answer questions. The committee also received the June 30, 2013 reports for Rice Trust, CVV, interest and investments, and those matters were taken for information only. Item number four was old business. There was no old business brought before the committee. Item five, new information. Staff reminded the committee that the mayor will be presenting his 2014 budget at the August 12, 2013 Finance Committee meeting to be held at the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Auditorium at 4:45 p.m. There being no further business to come before the committee, Chair Anderson declared the meeting adjourned at 5:00 p.m., and if there are no questions or further discussion, I would move to file those minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made, go ahead. Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report for July 29, 2013. Councilman Dacken, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was at that meeting and did make a comment as the liaison to the Rice Hospital board. I wonder if every two months is too far between reporting periods. I think that one of the issues that we face with the Affordable Care Act now is that it appears, anyway, on the casemix side of who's paying, that there are more Medicaid and Medicare payers that are not as good as private insurance, and I think we need to stay on top of that payer mix and make sure, in fact, that the, and I mentioned it at the Finance Committee meeting, that there is a document floating around that is entitled "Surviving on Medicare and Medicaid." It, that is not a good position to be in, just to say that you can survive in a big hospital like we have. And so, I just think it would be more important to have those folks come to the Finance Committee at least once a month. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? With that, we, where are we at?
Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Public Work Safety Committee report for July 30, 2013. Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on the 13th, or the 30th of July, last Tuesday. First item before us was Dangerous Weapons Ordinance. The committee discussed the most recent draft of changes to the Adages Weapons Ordinance. Issues discussed included backstops, safety and liability, and the following discussion is a motion was made, seconded and passed, for the following, and I will introduce the motion, excuse me, I will introduce the ordinance and set a hearing for August 19th of 2013.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to set the hearing for the ordinance, of the...
Dangerous weapons.
Dangerous weapons ordinance for August 19th?
Yes, two weeks. Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries, we will set the ordinance hearing.
Our next, excuse me, our next item was final pay estimate for airport crack ceiling. Staff presented the final estimate for crack ceiling at the airport. The work has been completed by Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC. Final payment requested is $87,321.66. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, for the following, and I will move to adopt a resolution closing out the State Project Number A4301-63, Contract 2, in the amount of $87,321.66, and to authorize our staff to execute and close-out documents.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution closing out State Project Number A4301-63, Contract 2, in the amount of $87,321.66, and to authorize the staff to execute the close-out documents. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Our next item had to do with state aid for maintenance and operations. Staff again presented a proposed agreement with MINDOT for state participation in the maintenance and operation of the Wilmer Municipal Airport. The agreement is for the years 2014 and 2015. Under this agreement, the state will reimburse the city for two-thirds of eligible costs not reimbursed by other sources and not to exceed $51,636 per state fiscal year. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to adopt a resolution approving the agreement and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the document.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution approving the agreement and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the document. Is there any discussion? Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask staff, are we back in compliance? Are we currently eligible for the $150,000? And would that, would those dollars be available to be used there or on the previous item three? Are we back in compliance?
No, we are not in compliance until we resolve some outstanding issues with an easement related to the new airport.
Do we know when we're going to be in?
We have been negotiating with that property owner to resolve that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Our next item was old business. Some committee members inquired about the status of the Lakeland Drive project. We were told by staff that televising was completed and the information and an update will be provided to our committee following a meeting with the project engineer in the next week. Questions were also asked about the stormwater task force and whether or not to, any work plans have been developed. It was determined that the committee would meet with the task force prior to the retreat and review the task force recommendations, and it was suggested that our interim city engineer prepare a work plan for stormwater activities. Item number six was new business. First thing on the, under new business was the topic of East Highway 12. We were updated by staff on recent meetings conducted by both MINDOT and the east-side business owners. Mr. Nathan Peterson from MINDOT reviewed the proposed 2014 maintenance project for both sides of the bypass bridge on East Highway 12. It includes a total reconstruction of lane paving, median construction, new turn lanes, and stormwater improvements. The district engineer has agreed to seek state funds for a corridor study if the city and the county participate. It was noted that the project planned for 2014 was a maintenance project and would have no impact on future construction or planning for that corridor. Mr. Butch Haug was at our meeting, and he spoke up and explained what he wanted to see in an East Highway 12 project. He was advocating for something more than what is planned for 2014. Mr. Warner from the Chamber of Commerce agreed and that the city needed a plan to access state funding for Highway 12 improvements. Mr. Peterson acknowledged that the department has no medium or long-range plans for changes to that corridor. The committee discussed what segments of East Highway 12, excuse me, of Highway 12 should be included in the corridor study, and it was determined that, determined that such a decision would be premature. Following discussion, again, a motion was made, seconded and passed, for the following, and I will introduce the recommendation to direct staff to pursue options for a Highway 12 corridor study with MINDOT and Candy Ojai County.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to direct the staff to pursue, to pursue options for a Highway 12 corridor study with MINDOT and Candy Ojai County. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I see Mr. Haug is in the audience. If you have any further thing to add to that or...
Questions or comments?
Please state your name and address.
My name is really Donald, but everybody does call me Butch, and everybody knows me by Butch. I live at 2670 Fairway Drive Northeast, and also own property as Haug Implement and Haug Kubota, as well as 75 acres on the north side of Highway 12, actually outside of the city limits. This is on East Highway 12. It would appear that in the past, and the reason why I become concerned about this is, is that it appears that in the past, there have been funds, have been available to do infrastructure improvement within, actually, within the city, but there has been no plan that has been put into place so that the city can apply for those funds. I guess, am I right or am I wrong on this? Could I have someone answer that?
There are various transportation funds that are available through, through the state of Minnesota, through Department of Transportation. Those funds are very competitive. Even if we have a plan, there's certainly no guarantee that those funds would be, would come to the city, but without having some of this pre-planned, the success is even less likely, but they're highly competitive funds across the state.
Understand that, but there is no chance if you don't have a plan.
Correct, yes, it's very limited if there's not a, if there's not a...
So, my concern is, is that, that the city, as well as working with the other entities, could drive some very important economic development on East Highway 12. Right now, there's properties that are available, and our administrator at the Chamber of Commerce has had some visitations from people who come to him, and, and I can probably not quite quote him, but at the same time, I can give you his reaction as what happens, and that is that people will come and they'll say, "We're interested in property on East Highway 12." And the next question that's asked of him, and that is, "What's going to happen to the highway?" And there is, there is no plan, so the particular person will turn tail and try to find something We have a major intersection into the city of Wilmer. That intersection is on the east side of town. We have three major highways that intersect at that intersection, Highway 12, Highway 23, and Highway 271. It would appear that this would be a major entrance to the city if there was improvements that were done in that particular area. And I, as we look at, as we look at the future of the city of Wilmer, I do believe with all of the activity that's going on in the east side of town, such as the Technology Center, the new Conference Center, there is, there's, there's a lot of things that could happen there and that could take place if there was some infrastructure to support that. And so, I guess I bring this to you, I bring this to you with a concern that there are, I think, funds available if there is a plan in place to take advantage of it. So, I leave that with you. I would appreciate if you'd do actually three things. Number one, adopt an action. Number two, appoint somebody to take action. Number two, appoint somebody to take action. And number three, give us a date as to when it can happen. That's the way I run my business, and I expect that the city should run theirs as well in the same fashion.
Well, because of your concerns, we do have this motion here to direct staff to look at options with the county and the state, and we are going to move forward on your first prom, or your first wish.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Butch. Call for the question. Or isn't that the proper term anymore?
Is a motion to close debate would be the proper term, and that would require a second.
There, go ahead.
You've taken, you've adopted a motion on...
Yeah, there's a motion in a second.
We haven't voted on it.
Yeah, we have.
We have. Okay, my mistake.
We're good.
Next item had to do with mosquito spraying. Our new Public Works Director, Mr. Scott Leibor, explained that mosquito spraying program was ongoing. This year, there were new regulations from MPC that required pesticide permits and a plan for spraying. To date, the entire city has been sprayed four times, and they have done spot spraying at Robins Island, Bakerfield, and at the Sunshine Festival. In addition to the spraying, the city applies Larvicide to stagnant surface waters, primarily stormwater ponds. $16,720 has been spent so far this year on mosquito control efforts. Future spraying for the balance of the season is totally dependent on the weather. Public Works crew will continue their application of Larvicide. Next item was pothole fielding under new business. Our Public Works Superintendent Leibor again stated that $48,000 has been spent on crack sealing, and they finished most of the catch basin and pothole repairs. Some problem areas remain to be repaired, and 285 tons of mix has been used so far this year. This is less than half the usual amount due to a late start. There will be continued patching as the weather allows, and it was noted that the problems with catch basins heaving are caused by the weather and that there's frost action in the road that allows openings between the casting and the road surface. This results in the washing out of base material, causing voids between the street surface and the base. Next on the new business was the wind generators. Our Councilmember DeBleek updated the committee on the wind generator operations. The utilities has been working to correct an intermittent problem. They believe they've identified the parts that are needed, and they've been ordered. Last item under new business was our police report. Chief Weifels indicated to us that there were 82 inmates in the county jail on that particular day, and the police department had responded to 865 calls over the last two weeks. If there's no questions or comments, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Committee, Safety Committee report for July 30th, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. From there, we'll move into old business. Hearing none, we'll move into new business.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think this is new business, just, I've noticed that every council meeting that we had, now the screen is up there, the audience is here looking at us, and maybe it'd be a good idea to have the chairs at a 45-degree angle over there, looking at the council and the screen. It's pretty tough sitting there, bending your neck and looking up. Just an idea.
Mr. Mayor?
Any further...
Mr. Mayor, I just comment, I can't see the screen either, so maybe a second screen might be in order to be able to look one direction or the other, so...
Maybe when we have our iPads, it'll be on the iPad.
Probably not, no. It would not.
Maybe.
But we can look at some alternatives.
Go ahead, is there further discussion or comments on the new business? Hearing none, we'll move into the announcement of the council committee meeting dates. Councilman Johnson. Finance.
Finance?
Finance Committee is meeting August 12th. It'll be at 4:45 here at the Wilmer Municipal Utilities.
Can we stress that to make sure that we can invite all the council people?
It will be advertised as a, as a work session, so that all council members are able to attend and participate.
Councilman Christensen, Public Works.
August 13th, 4:45, City Hall. Public Works, Public Safety.
Councilman Ammon, Labor?
Labor Relations Committee meeting, tentative is, was set for the 21st of August, and after some communication with our city administrator, she's recommending that we meet August 20th as a council to review the Furzman study in regard to the preparation or the suggestions that was made by Mr. Furzman and his staff on the, dealing with the Public Works Department or City Engineers Department.
Councilman, if I can just ask you, would a decision be made at that time, or would it be just information on...
I believe it's for, more or less for discussion.
But it will be advertised as a council, council work session, and council can take action then.
So will be an official meeting.
Yes. Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Fagerly?
Thursday, August 15th, 4:45, for community development.
Councilman DeBleek?
Yeah, a question, Mr. Mayor, on the Furzman report. There's a lot more recommendations in that Furzman report than just the organizational structure of the Public Works Department. Are we only going to discuss Public Works, or is that for the discussion of the whole report?
It was...
Right now, I believe we are going to concentrate on that particular issue, at least as a request of our city administrator. Is that correct, Shirley?
It can be structured in any way. It was my intent to essentially bring it back to the council with what the decision points are, and you can discuss as many as, many of those as is possible to do, and you can then determine where to go forward from there.
Mr. Mayor?
There's four or five things that were recommended.
I believe we had a motion to review the whole organizational structure when we, to have a work session to review the whole organizational structure.
We will. That was the primary focus was, to mention that, was that it seems to me that Shirley and staff want to have that issue addressed as soon as...
But I think the whole structure is what we need to look at.
We will be looking at the whole and reviewing the whole thing, yes. I believe that'll be at 4:45 in the chamber.
Yes, that's correct, Councilman.
Yeah, just a question, is that meeting scheduled for more than an hour then?
It'll be, it'll, is scheduled to start at 4:45 here at the, at the, without an end time specified.
Okay. With that in mind, do I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.